Hi, my name is Jenica Whitworth. I'm the Teen Center Director here at Clearfield High School. So when you come to Clearfield High School, the teen center is located in what the students call the "old gym." When they have the needs, students will be able to work it into their schedule. They can talk to their counselor about it, or they can talk to a teacher and see if there's a class period that will work for them to be able to come in. The students will come in, we'll greet them, and then decide what their need is. We're also going to have resources for them to learn how to make their own resumes, to do college applications, and learn how to advocate for themselves as they go into adulthood.
We know that when students don't have their basic needs met, then they oftentimes don't attend school. So this facility will allow for students to come in during or after-school hours, get a great shower.
We donated services and resources so that we could get this project up and going.
So we took this, what used to be an old locker room, and we transformed it into this teen center. We used a lot of exciting subdued materials. The tile people donated a lot of tile, and the carpet guy donated the carpet. And VCBL, we donated our time because we really felt that this was an incredible, amazing project to help some of the students that don't have the same advantages.
We have had people show up with donations, and again, I should mention Mark Shepherd and Clearfield City. Without them, this wouldn't happen. But individual citizens and citizen groups have showed up with just so much generosity as they've heard about what this center is for and they want to help. When students come back to Clearfield High, they're going to remember how they were treated and what was available to them, that they had what they needed at Clearfield High School, and that they'll remember the relationships and the support that they had that helped them be successful.
I heard about Halo from some of my friends with dogs and decided to give it a try. The program and the app taught me to...
Okay, let's take a look at the image. All right, so let's take a look at the image. How many cookies do we have total, first of all, guys? Twelve. My name is Raoul Sanchez, and I'm a 3rd grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary. So a little bit on my background, I'm first-generation Mexican-American. I was born in Los Angeles, California, in South Central. Both my parents were immigrants that immigrated from Mexico. My mother didn't make it past the 6th grade. My dad didn't make it past junior high and 8th grade. My parents lived in a little garage, and they worked their way up just a little bit and moved to apartment complexes in Pomona, California, where I had my first educational experience, an immersion-type preschool. And I had some outstanding teachers, but my most impactful, I think, moment in education was probably my 3rd grade teacher, Mrs. Gain, and probably the reason why I'm teaching 3rd grade now. I appreciate everything she came with when she came into the classroom because she always had this exciting personality. But I really do remember her not only treating me as a student, but treating me as the child that I was and letting me make those mistakes and saying, "It's okay, you don't have to be perfect," was something I had not heard before and really made me cherish that 3rd grade classroom growing up. And so I moved to Utah when I was 14, and I went to Syracuse Junior and graduated from Leighton High. And I remember graduating from high school as such a huge experience because I am the first in my family, immediate family, to graduate from high school and the first in most of my extended family to graduate from high school. So I ended up graduating in 2015 with my bachelor's in elementary education, K through 6. I toured a lot of schools during my student teaching. I went to Hillfield Elementary, Crestview, quite a few, but something about Lincoln grabbed me in, and it was definitely the amount of diversity that we have here at Lincoln. It's this little pocket of something that I saw a lot in California and what I was used to, and it drew me in, and I've been here for, this is my 6th year. So growing up, there was always a large expectation on education, even though my parents didn't get to have that opportunity. I think it was because they didn't get to have that opportunity that they wanted so badly for us. And they were here my first day, they were helping me set up my classroom, and my mom still has that picture on her phone of when, on my desk, setting up a couple of things. And it was an awesome experience having them there up until when the bell rang and they head out. I have this very deep love for superheroes, especially Marvel characters, and my favorite Marvel character is Spider-Man. He had these extraordinary abilities, and even with those extraordinary abilities, he'll had those financial problems at home with his aunt, he still had to deal with issues at school, he still had to deal with all these other types of personal issues. And I've had to deal through all those issues growing up, and I've had those issues in my life, and so it was always the character I gravitated towards. I've been incorporating comic books into our writing and reading curriculum, so even my kids that aren't the most intrigued by superheroes, they're like, "Okay, they're all right." They really want to inject themselves into it, and I think having that intrinsic motivation for them has been really good in that different form that they might not get very often. I think the way that I've adapted to having masks in the classroom, because it is super difficult, sometimes I can't tell if my students are upset or worried or any of those feelings that you can just see on a student's face, and I've tried to be as animated as possible, like using my hands. And so I think it's really helped because at the beginning of the year, the students had a hard time kind of adjusting to that period. They didn't really want to talk to each other. There was that fear looming over the whole classroom, and that's been the biggest adaptation, is just being a little bit more animated in the classroom, and I think they appreciate it. I think the reason why I teach, I think there's several reasons, and I think there's several moments that have, that I've hit through. Being able to see that growth in that student that didn't have that confidence and didn't think that they can do it, and they come out of my class feeling like they can do it. Or when I get a student that is having all these issues at home in ways that I can't even explain and things that I can only even comprehend to a point because, yes, I've had my hardships, but I think certain students have had some even more difficult times, whether it's not having their parents at home or having to deal with addiction at home. And them coming to be and feeling open and feeling free and feeling like they can be themselves here and knowing that they have a safe space, I think those are the moments where I see this is, this is why I teach. I know that I have to be here. I know that I need to be that person. I am that person for them at this moment, and I need to continue being that person for those little kids that are going to come through my classroom and so they can see that they can achieve higher expectations, that it doesn't have to be the same as it might be in their homes, and continue that circle and know that he's the first person who's gone to school. I mean, they get to see my little biography beforehand. Mr. Sanchez is the first individual in his family to go to, to go to school and graduate. I could, maybe I can do something like that, and seeing it and not just hearing about it. I'm Raoul Sanchez, and I teach.
Grammarly helps you work more efficiently, which makes accomplishing your work goals easier.
So my name is Craig Carter. I'm the Business Administrator with the District, and I have responsibility over the Nutrition Service Department. So the Davis School District is unique in the fact that we have this facility, our central facility, that prepares all of the lunches for all 91 of our schools. And my first introduction to the central facility that Pam Sokolos has run since its inception was in December of 1997. I went over to a Christmas social that Pam was hosting. They were just completing the construction of the facility, and I was just amazed at what I saw. Pam has just done an amazing job of bringing her vision to fruition that has exceeded everybody's expectations.
Central Facility has been part of Davis District since 1998. It was built in 97. It came about based on the growth of the district. In the mid-'90s, we had tremendous growth in the district, and so we put together a strategic committee to decide what we would do, if we would build new kitchens, if we would build a central facility, and we went to different places to see Cook-Chill facilities. And then we came back and presented the idea to the administration and the strategic plan. The district owns warehouses up in Freeport Center, and so we took one part of G4 and turned it into a production facility. We have a Nestle chef that came and helped us. We had bakery specialists. It was a team effort. It was really exciting. Once we built the central facility, we had efficiency kitchens. All of the new schools that were built or remodeled have an efficiency kitchen in them. They have a self-serve counter, two walk-ins, a microwave, and a combi oven. The good part about the Cook-Chill or the central facility is that the product is consistent, and we can just have minimal labor out in the facilities, finishing things off and heating. And so everyone serves the same thing. The same chili is served at the high schools as junior highs and the elementary schools. We feed 34,000 lunches per day and about 5,000 breakfasts. Now that's pre-COVID, but we are now at about 20,000 meals and going up.
Cook-Chill is actually a method of cooking, and so we've got the big 300-gallon kettles. We take it up to a critical control point, a certain temperature, and then the product is bagged, hot, and it goes right from the bagging into the tumble chiller and is cooled immediately there. And then we're actually pasteurizing the product. And then what that does is that gives the product a certain shelf life in the cooler. We do anywhere between 2 to 3 different products a day in our Cook-Chill. In the bakery, we'll do probably 3 to 4 different products in the bakery. We started with about 60 schools, and in 24 years, we're up to 92 schools. I've grown with from the very beginning and seen the progress of the facility. And to where we are now, we have USDA inspectors in the building every single day. We sell to a lot of different school districts. We actually have other school districts from out of state come and...
We want to welcome all of you to our Board of Education Workshop Meeting today. We appreciate your attendance, and those of you that are joining the live stream, we welcome you as well. We would like to begin by asking Ms. Cheryl Phipps, a board member, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with our public comment period, just a couple of things relative to this period of time during our board meeting. I'll invite you to the podium. Today, we normally allow six speakers, but we had some confusion relative to the numbers that were given out, so we have seven people that we're going to allow to speak today. Each of you will have a maximum of three minutes. Ms. Hanson, to my left, under the clock on your right, has a timer. When you hear that timer, if you have not completed, you need to complete at that time. We ask that throughout the meeting, that all that are in the room keep your masks on, and when you come to the podium, we would also like you to keep your mask on at that time as well. This particular part of our board meeting is reserved for speakers who reside within Davis School District, unless otherwise noted by the presiding board member. We'd like you, if you would, when you come to the podium, to provide your name and the topic you wish to address. The public comment period shall not be used to air complaints concerning bidding, contracts, employment, or personnel issues, to criticize or defame district employees or board members, or to make complaints for which other avenues for appeal exist. Person speaking shall direct comments to the presiding board member and may direct questions or comments to the superintendent or other board members only upon approval of the presiding board member. Members of the board and the superintendent may ask questions of any person who addresses the board only upon approval of the presiding board member, and the board is enabled by law to deliberate or take action on items raised during the public comment period that is another, that is not otherwise on the board agenda. We would ask that there be no clapping or cheering when the speakers are speaking, and again, if those who are speaking would address your comments to the, to the presiding board member, we'd appreciate that. We'll begin with Marie Hall.
Hi, my name is Maria Hall. I have five students in the Davis School District from Davis High to Fairfield Junior High and Morgan Elementary. Two weeks ago, my daughter at Fairfield Junior High sent me a text of a handout from her US History class. The page was a definitions paper of a nearpod they were covering in class. The supplemental material was from the district's anti-bias material that has been named and will hereafter be referred to as "Building Communities." I spoke to the principal at Fairfield, Mrs. Midgley, last Thursday to voice my concerns about the material. The material includes gender orientation, sexual identity, and biased ethnicity definitions, two of which topics would be cause for administrative leave or dismissal if taught by a licensed health teacher in the same school. Mrs. Midgley promised transparency multiple times at our meeting. I asked her to email the parents of students in those classes and make them aware of what their children are being taught. This has not happened. I made an appointment to view the Building Communities material with the Equity Department. Yesterday, I showed up to my appointment with two other concerned parents. I was allowed to go to the Global Education Center conference room, but the other parents were denied access because a conference room, big enough for all three of us, had not been reserved. If you are not familiar with the Global Education Center, it held 11 chairs, 6 tables, and 1 desk, clearly large enough to hold such a small group. The first 7 Building Communities lessons were read to me. I was not allowed to take pictures of any of the material. I have now contacted Dave Tanner and asked for transparency and parent notification. Still, neither has happened. This curriculum or supplemental material is already being taught to our children, but we, as parents, are being limited or denied the right to view it. We have not been notified of it. We have not been asked for our permission. The district's claim of honesty and transparency is false. Please prohibit this Building Communities material or any other anti-bias material from being taught to our children until the time that parents have the ability to review it and make their own informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Andrea Stringfellow?
My name is Nicole Mackey, and I'm actually in place of Andrea Stringfellow today.
If Andrea Stringfellow's not here, then you're not able to take her place.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Rosalynn Van Fleet?
President, Superintendent, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rosalynn Van Fleet, and I'm here to represent the Davis Education Association. I'm happy to report that 98% of our members voted to ratify the negotiated settlement. Educators would like to thank you for making employees one of your top priorities. The support and respect that you have given us has not gone unnoticed. We know that we teach in the best district in the state, thanks to the difficult work that you do. We appreciate this compensation package, but we also appreciate all of the other things that you do for us: the virtual birthday cards, the kind notes, the school visits, the listening ears, and the times you have shielded us from challenging community matters so that we could do our jobs. Thank you so much for all that you do for the students and the teachers in Davis School District.
Thank you, Ms. Van Fleet. Brooke Stevens?
Hello. My name is Brooke Stevens. I have four kids in Davis School District. I got my master's degree in Critical and Creative Thinking from UMass Boston, where I, I can't breathe, where I studied other cultures' thinking styles and developed a program for intercultural study built around understanding our own enculturation process. Being a student in the CCD program was one of the most enjoyable things I've ever done, and I thought every student in America needed these skills ASAP. But it appears that sadly, critical and creative thinking is being used as a catalyst for pushing agenda, an agenda, because of the content that is used to teach it. As part of the Critical Creative Thinking Program, we had to define creativity. Is a child's scribble creative? What about the body art on participants of Burning Man? One of the definitions that stuck in my mind was that first, you had to master your craft and contribute in a way that was unique, and yet not too unique that it wasn't understood. I would like to take that same approach to thinking critically. First, you need to master your craft. You have to have a profound understanding of the topic. Yet, children are being asked to critically and negatively deconstruct the world around them, and yet they are complete novices and must rely on the teacher's understanding of the topic to identify bias. If this is what you must do, then let the parents also weigh in with their bias, or at least tell us what is being taught and when so that we can have these discussions with our children at home. Building Communities is focused on identifying stereotypes, biases, and assumptions. I have, for each of you, 14 pages. We've reviewed the outlines and, as parents, been commenting in relation to principles found in critical race theory. I will hand that out to you after. But as you're focusing on identifying stereotypes, biases, and assumptions, why not teach them to identify truth? Identifying truth is the other side of the same coin. Asking a school to be the ones to teach students to identify truth sounds like it's crossing the line into indoctrination. Flip the coin, please. You are teaching subjective material that a teacher needs to interpret with their own biases. Please involve us as parents. I would also like to say that as much as I love studying CCT, it also rocked my world. I was in my mid-20s, and I was being told that I would never have enough information to make my decisions, and that every piece of information was tainted and unreliable. I didn't think I could ever make a decision or judgment again. With much thought and effort, I finally came to a theory that could guide me in my interactions with the world. To discern truth, I must use all my senses, my brain, my friends and family, my emotions, my resources, and my spirit. As I go through a lifetime of pursuing truth, I do so by asking myself, "What don't I know? Who could I ask? What don't I understand? What is the motivation behind this?" Maybe CCT is as simple as teaching students to look for truth and, as they do so, to ask important questions. Is that my timer?
Yes, your time's up. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. If you want to give those to me, I'll hand those out at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Our next public comment from Kelly England.
My name is Kelly England, and I have four children attending in schools in Davis School District. These past few months, I have been researching SEL and other curriculums in Davis School District. I have had conversation with individuals in the Educational Equity Department, the SEL Department, Teaching and Learning Department, and our elementary school principal. After all of this, I have had many concerns. First is the supplemental instruction called "Building Communities." As I look at the outlines online, there are topics, ideologies, theories, and political agendas being discussed that should not be discussed in our schools. Another concern is I have only been able to look at the outline for this program online, and I've been told I cannot view this curriculum until possibly August. They are letting the parents see it first, whose schools it is being piloted in. So does this mean that it could be instituted in the rest of the schools next year without all parents having the opportunity to see it? I was told it was on the clever platform that we have to come and view at the district to protect children's information. I don't understand why we cannot have a printed copy of the lesson plans. In a recent board meeting, talking about policy, it was stated parents should have access to any of the curriculum, supplemental instruction, et cetera. I was also told by the Teaching and Learn Department that they want parents involved. Next, in the Building Communities Elementary outline, it states, "Anti-bias: Education cannot happen without a strong foundation in social and emotional learning." The chart below shows how the anti-bias lesson can be incorporated with the K6 Sanford Curriculum, Sanford-Harmony Curriculum. They then show a chart on how to incorporate it in the SEL curriculum for Sanford, which is the SEL program being instituted at my children's elementary. Using a child's social-emotional for controversial issues is manipulative and not the place of teachers, principals, or the education system. Teaching children in a group or individually how to handle emotions and these issues is the role of parents and mental health professionals. To do so as an educator is malpractice and inappropriate. I have many more concerns, but my last concern tonight is teachers taking liberties within this school district to teach things that are not fact-based and to indoctrinate our children. I have had a few incidents this year with my children at their junior high. Teachers need to stick to the standards and objectives found in Davis's death standards. Utah Code states, "A student's parent is a primary person responsible for the education of the student, and the state is secondary and supportive role to the parent." Please honor this as a district and school board. I encourage you to look at Building Communities SEL programs, research the COs and programs' purpose and intent, and who is funding these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. England. Becky Hope?
My name is Becky Hope, and I have four kids in the Davis School District. You guys were elected to help educate, and I'll tell you what, I've been educated this past year. I've learned some very important facts. Here are just a few. Parents are at the top of the education organizational chart. This, of course, is intuitive. Parents know what's best for their children, not bureaucrats. Each component of the education system ultimately answers to us, the parents. You have chosen to serve us, the parents. You even took an oath. You solemnly swore to support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that you would discharge the duties of your office with fidelity. I submit that you have betrayed that oath. Why? Because the number-one purpose of the United States Constitution and Utah Constitution is to protect the natural rights of its citizens. That includes, of course, parents and children. How has that happened? The decision-making chain of command in this system is complex. In practice, I've learned that the complexity allows for a lack of accountability. What we get is a lot of finger-pointing and runaround instead of people doing the right thing and answering to the ultimate authority, the parents. Your actions pitted principal against principal, principal against teacher, teacher against teacher, teacher against student, and student against student. Here's what else I've learned about how things work in reality. The governor issues illegal orders allowing county health departments to make illegal rules as school districts force principals to follow. What's the weak link in the chain? School board. Because those elected above you are too high up in the food chain for parents to touch, and those below you are employees, principals, and teachers who fear the loss of their jobs. So many teachers were afraid to have a voice this last year, and that is wrong to make our teachers feel that way. So many parents felt like they... So many parents felt like they did not have a voice this last year, and that is wrong as well. Parent consent, especially with anything medical, is the most important, but you, you have the power. The obligation to properly represent parents and refuse to follow the county health department's illegal orders, it is incumbent upon you. You have nothing to lose but your integrity. We demand free choice. The choice to cover our children's faces with pieces of cloth and the choice to refuse such a harmful practice. If parents want to have their children wear a mask, that's their choice. If parents do not want to do this, that's their choice. It's as simple as that. Remember, you answer to us. We don't need your permission nor your blessing. As a board, you should work together with parents to make our schools successful. You should support and encourage parent involvement.
You need to sit down. You're out of order, please.
You should do what's right.
We invite Jessica Five Ash to the podium, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm a parent of two Davis County High School kids and a former teacher and UEA leader. Washington County stopped requiring masks a week ago. The governor has said no masks required after this week, so I'm having trouble seeing the logic of continuing. The only conclusion I've been able to draw is that it's not anything about the health of our kids or anyone else, but simply a means to exert more control. There's no focus on teaching students how to strengthen their immune systems, like taking vitamins, getting outside, and seeing their friends. Seventy to eighty percent of all patients who became extremely sick with the coronavirus were deficient in vitamin D, but we're not talking about that. Just cover your face and shut up. How about an educational campaign on how to keep our bodies healthy? Let students and their families make the choice to wear masks, as the governor has now allowed for schools. Regarding CRT, I have a dream that one day on the red hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but the content of their character. Looking back over the last few decades, Dr. King's dreams have become reality. But at the current time, we seem to have gone so far in the right direction that we're now on the wrong path. My Caucasian children are coming home telling me that, well, that's because we're white. We just had more privilege. I don't think so. I was on WIC when my husband was in the Army, newly enlisted. It's time to stop. We're going in the wrong way. And that's all. Thank you.
We'll move to our agenda items now. Dr. Linford will invite you to the stand, if you would, for the graduation procedures.
Thank you, President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, Honorable Board Members, Superintendent. It's good to be with you tonight. I'll be brief. Yesterday, schools, high schools wrapped up final surveying of parents to get extra ticket numbers. So at this point, I am pleased to announce that every parent who requested an extra ticket through the school process received an extra ticket. So at this point, hopefully, everyone that would like to go to the graduations is able to go, and there are still a few tickets left, if need be. Graduation this year will look a lot like every other graduation we've ever had. At this point, Weaver County Health Department for large gatherings still recommends masks for people who are sitting close in large numbers. So at this point, that will continue. I keep saying, "At this point," almost every time I talk to a school leader, because, as you know, that changes quickly. And frankly, we hope it does. We hope we continue to see more opportunities for more family and folks to come, and certainly for graduates to have their moment. On the paper I handed out, this is really more information for the board members so they get a sense of where their places will be at the graduation. If you refer to that paper, what I have there is the stand where the board would sit and the other dignitaries, the school administration, some of the student leaders, and then the blue lines representing where the students will sit on the floor of the stadium. Students will exit the tunnel, as they always have, but different from past years, at least right now, the plan is that students will enter the stadium, they will pick up their own diploma cover, they'll take their picture, but before they do that, we'll allow them to remove their masks. They'll have their picture taken without their mask, they'll do their commencement walk without their mask, and as they return to their seat, they'll put their mask back on as they gather back in those closer quarters. We will ask dignitaries at this point to primarily be applauding as students walk by. We're going to avoid a lot of handshakes and contact and those things for now. That's been the recommendation of the Weaver County Health Department, as followed by Weaver State University. The other good news is we're one of the few schools and school districts in the state that's able to enjoy an opportunity of a controlled, air-conditioned, bathroom-provided, amazing, regal atmosphere for our graduation. We're pleased with that. I think we took a little bit of a gamble in that decision, but I really believe that that's paid off, and our students will be benefited for that. That's all I have, and if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer those.
So there'll be no actual handing of the diploma? They just pick that up and get their picture taken at that time?
At this point, no. Historically, they would come out of the tunnel, they would hand them a diploma cover, they would have their picture taken, they would hand it back, and then they would walk through, and we'd hand them another one. They'll just take their original one that they'll keep. The picture that they'll be taking will be with their diploma cover, unless it changes, which, as I've said, we kind of hope it does.
Everything's fluid. Ms. Tanner?
Yeah. Have we counted up the number of graduates? Is it way... Are a lot of people choosing not to participate inside graduation, or are the numbers similar to two years ago?
Very similar. I think more and more, you probably have extended family that are less likely to travel during this time, and that may be a difference. I think we're slightly less. Four tickets per graduate used to be what we offered five years ago. That's about what they got, and they requested more. So my sense is that people are pleased. Some families requested many more than the four tickets, and some just a couple more for maybe grandparents. My sense is that, yes, they have, will have similar numbers that we've had in the past.
Dr. Linford, just to clarify for the board, similar program to years past, correct?
Yes.
So the board will be speaking. Board members, and just if you're unclear on those assignments, please let us know so that we can make sure everyone knows what they're doing that night. Also, want to thank publicly Weaver State, President Mortensen, and his group have been outstanding to work with. Dr. Linford has done, you know, the lion's share of our work on it, along with the other secondary directors, but very grateful for Weaver State and the partnership there for their work with us on that.
I echo that. They have bent over backwards for that. And I also want to remind you, really, the most important part and the crowning point of the graduation ceremony is the board member certifying the graduates. That's the moment when truly they become graduates. So thank you for that and for being there, and we'll try to keep you updated as we get even the tiniest changes in the coming weeks.
Very good. Dr. Linford, thank you for all the work. We're going to move to Mr. Craig Carter, along with Mr. Lefell, Mr. Snow. This is fiscal year '21 final legal budget and fiscal year '22 tenancy budget. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, President. I'll invite Mr. Lefell, Mr. Snow up to the podium. Tonight, we're going to review the final legal budget in fairly briefly, but in some detail. You've all received a copy of it. And just to reiterate and refresh everybody's minds, the tentative budget will take place, the adoption of it will take place in August after the truth and taxation hearings, since this budget does call for the legislative required tax increase for voted leeway. So that will not be adopted in June. So we'll go through the final legal with you tonight with Mr. Snow and Mr. Lefell. So I'll let them go ahead.
Thank you. Timothy, can you put that up? Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so Steve and I are just going to focus tonight on the final legal budget for the current year. So we have about six weeks to go, but we kind of have a good handle on where we think we might end and how we're going to relate to our goals that we had when we started the year. So just a few numbers. Five hundred and almost $600 million in our general fund. Total budget's over $800 million, so we're getting close to that. We told Craig he can't retire until we get $1 billion in our budget, so we're hoping that takes several more years. You can see the breakdown. We're very dependent on state revenues, as you can see, as compared. Federal revenue also is higher, and Steve will talk about that a little bit. You can see our anticipated expenditures are about $585, which leaves about $7.5 million is where we anticipate we would end. One of our board goals has been to fully fund the economic stabilization account. So for us to get there for next year, that would be about $2.5 million we would need to put in that economic stabilization account, which would give us to $31 million. The other five would move to unassigned fund balance. Those numbers are a little lower than in the past, but we've made that decision as a board and as a school district that we didn't want to focus as much on fund balance, but we still want to add to it and be responsible with how we're spending our funds. We will obviously come to you in late August, September with the audit report and go through some final numbers as to where we're going to be at. But this is, we're going to, we think we're going to be very close to our goals this Just some numbers on teacher salary. Those are always interesting to see. From FY '20 to '22, we're almost up $5,000 on beginning teacher salary, and that's a direct reflection of our goals that we've made as a district and as a board to get those beginning salaries up. Part of our final legal budget that you've seen includes 22 COVID grants that we received this year to the tune of about $34 million. That does not include S or III money, which will be coming next fiscal year, which is probably another $40 to $45 million. So that is, 22 grants came from cities, from states, from counties. We were very well-treated by the folks in our county this year and wanted to lend a hand to those families and students that were impacted by COVID. So great place to be. We always talk about this number. How much are we spending on folks that actually interact with students on a daily basis? And it's something we take a lot of pride in in our district, that almost 88% of every dollar we receive in our general fund is focused on individuals who interact with students every day. So when we think about that, it's not just teachers, it's counselors, it's custodians, it's principals, it's all of those folks that create that environment for that student's education. 12% goes for other parts, and so that would be like our curriculum and Teaching and Learning Department, administration, all the services like payroll, accounting, purchasing, all those things that don't necessarily interact with a student on a daily basis, but obviously are critical when it comes to our total process. So that number's been right around 87% for many years, and we're proud of that number because we focus our funds the most we can on students. Any questions I can answer on the general fund for now? Okay, I will turn some time to Steve to talk about a few other funds.
So the next fund we'd like to talk about is the Debt Service Fund. And in that fund is where we make our payments for the bonds that have been sold through the authorizations throughout the years. And this coming year, we'll spend $49 million on principal and $20 on interest, with the balance going to other administrative costs for those bonds. The outstanding debt that we'll have at the end of this fiscal year is $504 million. We want you to compare that to the legal debt limit for our district, which is $1.8 billion, so we're nowhere near close to that. The other fund, where we spend that money we get, is in the capital fund. The capital fund has got mainly three sources. The local property taxes that go to the capital levy, there's some state equalization money, and then these bond dollars that we've discussed. The major projects that we're working on right now, as you've seen, is at South Clearfield Elementary, and we're also beginning at the Catalyst Center in Kaseville and the F2 remodel there and the Freeport Center. The only one that's coming from the bond money of those three is the South Clearfield Elementary. The others are coming from their capital fund balance, and so you'll see a reduction in that fund balance as we finish those projects up in the next year or two. We also have $6 million, that is for our large capital projects that the facilities administrator manages. About 3 million of those are the ongoing needs of roofs and boilers, things like that. So there's a very small amount to take care of as many buildings as we have in this district. The $6.5 million of the capital money is spent on instructional technology. You've heard of our computer refresh program for the schools, as well as other instructional technology items, and that's paid for out of this capital fund. Lastly, there's district technology, buses, vehicles. We have a furniture grant program to schools, some small maintenance projects, and there are 88 combinations. As far as the pie chart, it's interesting to see how the general fund money breaks out. See, the state funds is my size of pie, and I only leave the little bit of pie for Tim is in the federal funds. At 8% is $47 million, which is about $15 million more than the previous year, and that's directly related to our COVID money. The property taxes with 20% is what we levy here locally. In the capital fund, you'll see the tax money is the lion's share of this fund because we're done spending the bond proceeds. Those bond projects will be done, and so we'll be looking forward to another authorization coming up. In the Debt Service Fund, of course, all of their proceeds are from taxes. We used to have a small federal subsidy, which we no longer have, so everything we pay our debt is through our tax. The interesting thing about school lunch, that fund is the, you'll notice, the federal money is 80%, and that has changed from the previous year because the federal subsidy is paying everyone who wants to eat is being paid for there. So the meal sales and the total revenue, the $24 million, didn't change. It just swapped from meal sales to federal, and then when that's done, it'll swap back. Lastly, we have our self-insurance fund. We'd like to describe the projected revenue. So expenses to the district fund for health insurance is $78 million. Of that 78, we projected we'll only spend about 76. So it's been a pretty good year for a self-insurance fund to be able to cover. The claims were about $71 million are what we expect them to end up to be with the processing of all those claims, takes about $5 million. At the end of June, we expect the reserve to be about $13 million, which sounds like a lot. However, one month of expenses is 5.8, so that's a couple of months. So it's not really a large amount, but it is healthy, and so we're making progress in the right direction there. Did anyone have any questions you'd like to ask about those things we've discussed?
Can you remind me, Ms. Snow, where the revenue comes from for the self-insurance? Is that from payments from individual vigils that are insured with the program?
The revenues from that comes from the expenses that district programs pay. So we take that and swap that over to the other fund to make sure that gets covered.
Okay, so next steps, just so you know what we'll be dealing with as we move forward. We plan that, actually, that says May 31st, but I think we're planning to share that tomorrow to post the final legal and tentative budget on our website that people will be able to inspect and review. June 2nd is our public hearing. We've noticed that, or will notice that, this week. And again, that hearing is only for the final legal budget. We won't address the tentative budget in that hearing. And then... And then, but what we will have to do is that hearing will have to announce and make sure that people realize that the tentative budget anticipates an increase from the certified tax rate. We won't have that certified tax rate till right around the eighth of June. But in order to maximize our vote and board leeway guarantee, the legislature requires us to raise our voted leeway up to sixteen hundred every five years. And so that will take place this year. And so we'll announce that at the public hearing that we plan to have a truth and taxation hearing in August. That'll be at, on August third, which is our scheduled board meeting. And at that time, the board will vote to either approve or not approve the tax increase and the tentative budget for FY twenty-two, which currently includes that tax increase. So the key dates will be June second and August third. Any, any questions on anything? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. No questions? Ms. Phipps?
Mr. Carter, I'd just like to know, given the final budget, is there, are there areas where we've budgeted that we shifted money because we spent considerably more money in an area that we didn't anticipate or we didn't spend money? I just don't see that as ideal with this question. I just don't know whether the impact of COVID has shifted the way we questioned it from the year ago.
Well, you'll, you probably will see an increase in certainly teachers from our online program. You saw the revenue increases from the COVID money, which we've identified. There are some, certainly some savings from some of the expenses that typically are spent at schools because some of those things didn't take place. They may just not be at the magnitude to register, given the numbers that we deal with. But certainly there have been modifications to the final legal as a result of the pandemic. But we anticipate a more normal year in FY twenty-two as we move ahead.
No more questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter, Mr. Luffel, Mr. Snow. Appreciate it. Let's turn the time to Assistant Superintendent Mr. Zerbakin and Ms. Julie Larson, our special ed director for Davis School District Special Education Policy and Procedures Manual. Mr. Zerbakin?
President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, esteemed board members, Superintendent Newey, business manager Carter. It's a pleasure to present to you guys today our Special Education Policy and Procedure Manual. Yearly, we are required to present this to the board, so that the board has the opportunity to review that document. There is no requirement for there to be formal board action, but rather, we are, we are required to be able to present that to the board. So at this time, I've asked our director, Ms. Julie Larson, to present this to you and to speak to you about any specific changes. I know it's a rather, it's a rather dense, lengthy document, and she's going to highlight changes and new pieces to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Zerbakin, President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, esteemed board members. Thank you today for letting me share this policy and procedure manual. This is the policy and procedures that outline our operating procedures for special education. So if you were to look at this document, you would see that it outlines how we go about identifying children who would be entitled to special education, how we would go about holding eligibility and defining if a child is eligible for special education, how we would go about holding an IEP meeting, making sure we're following procedural safeguards for that, and providing fate to students. It also includes the technical pieces of manifestation hearings, suspension, and all other guiding procedures that we utilize in special education in our district. The only real major change from previous policy manuals is how we identify students with specific learning disabilities. In the past, we have used what is called a discrepancy model. The discrepancy model is basically a very technical mathematical equation that allows us to identify if a student has a disability or not. The new method that we will be using is what is called patterns of strength and weaknesses. That model identifies within a child's intellectual IQ their strengths and their weaknesses. It then goes and looks at their academic performance and identifies patterns of strengths and weaknesses in their academic achievement. What we should see in order to identify a student with a specific learning disability would be a strength or weaknesses in their IQ that correlates to strength and weaknesses in their academics. That is the new model that we will be using. That model is in the best interest of children. Sometimes what happened with the discrepancy model is we had children who, because they had a low IQ, would not necessarily qualify for special education. And so this new model, patterns of strength and weaknesses, allows us to really look at each individual child and their individual needs and be able to identify the needs that they have along the lines of a disability. That is really the only change in the policy manual from the policy manual we've had before. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Luffel?
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Larson. A couple of questions. In the contents, it kind of cites different CFR. Is that like a federal document?
Yes.
That determines most of these policies?
Yes.
Great. And then I went to a training that you did last year, kind of teaching teachers about shifting to this pattern of strength and weaknesses.
Yes.
Are there specific then tests and assessments then that correlate with this?
Yes.
That you'll adopt?
Yes, and we actually spent a significant amount of time in prior years working on this. We had, we had experts in our district who were very familiar with testing, and they put together what our policy should be, which we adopted.
Great. And then my last question is, just talking to some of our special educators and parents with IEPs, there were some differences that were options this year digitally for parents to participate in IEPs. Are those incorporated long-term, or were those just due to federal waivers? I know people really liked having, you know, being able to bring in another parent digitally that wouldn't be able to be there typically for an IEP setting.
Yeah, so, so let me, so in addition to this policy manual, which this policy manual then goes on our webpage, we have in addition to that what we call a pie document. They are internal policies and procedures that we utilize. Teachers have access to those. They're, they're a little more specific to the needs of our district and to the needs of teachers and students here. And so in some of those documents, okay, what we call the pie documents, we would have policies and procedures about how to go about addressing some of those issues. For example, let me give an example. One of the concerns that we have had is that with some of our students being on Davis Connect, for some special ed students, that's not the best-case scenario for their learning. And so one of the things that we have done is we have developed guiding questions for teachers and IEP teams that as they look at determining if this is the best location for delivery of services, that they go through those guiding documents. Those things you're talking about would be in our pie document rather than in this document.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Eckersley?
The way this is going to work now would, are you going to be able to identify a student who say, in all respects, they do fine in school, except when they get to math, it just doesn't work well for them? Or maybe it's reading, it just doesn't, they just don't pick it up fast. Are we going to be able to identify those students, get them the help they need?
So with the patterns of strength and weaknesses, there needs to be a correlation between a deficit in the IQ and a deficit in the academics. So if we see a deficit in working memory, then we can correlate that to being able to work in mathematics and solve problems, and we would be able to identify that child as having a disability, and they would qualify for services.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tanner?
Do you expect that this, well, it's hard to predict anything, but do you foresee numbers rising or falling, or probably staying about the same?
Here, here's our focus. And we need to give the best instruction we can give to students. And the better our instruction, the more engaging our instruction, the more explicit our instruction, especially for students with disabilities, the more we can get them in, give them opportunities to respond. Because the more opportunities they have to respond, that improves their success rate in the classroom. That ought to be our focus. That needs to be where we need to be focusing on helping kids. Because if we can improve in those areas, then we can have less students needing special education services. The goal is to have every student succeed in their general ed classroom with whatever support they need, or to be able to succeed in their special ed classroom by using best-practice techniques to improve our instruction. So I'd like to say no. I hope our numbers don't increase. I hope that our focus is on our instruction and helping kids to be successful in the general classroom with, with a little bit of support from special education teachers.
So Julie, after identifying the student, say a parent disagrees with the placement or the location or whatever you come up with, how much input does that parent have, knowing that that parent knows that child the best?
So all decisions are made by a team. And that team consists, and that's outlined in this document. The team consists of a parent, a general ed teacher, a special ed teacher, an LEA representative, possibly other related servers that might be serving this child. And that discussion then occurs with that team. Of course, we listen to parents. We, absolutely, they are a critical piece of the IEP team. Does a parent get to make the ultimate decision? It's a team decision. And so sometimes there are situations where parents disagree with how, what we have determined, the services that have been determined, or the placement of the child. In that instance, the IEP team needs to re-meet.
Okay, thank you.
We need to re-meet, and we need to rediscuss that because we need to be paying attention to what parents are saying to us. At the same time, let me just say that legally, our obligation is to children. We serve children. And if that child needs services, we would be remiss not to provide those services to that child. And occasionally, we do get in situations where we don't always agree as a team. But the goal is to work together and do what is right for kids.
Thank you. As I've sat in on many IEP teams, sometimes some of those people really don't know that, that student. So I hope they're listening and being willing to re-evaluate and listen to those that really do know that student. So thank you, Julie.
Well, before you sit down, Ms. Larson, I think it's, you know, it's probably a good time. We have one more board meeting before school officially ends. But with your presentation tonight makes me think back to July and August when we had many, many parents who had children with IEPs, special education, special situations that called us as board members, called the district. And they had legitimate concerns, as you well know. But what I remember, and I think all of us remember, is how your department just sprung into action and invited people, your staff members at the school level, administrators, at the district level. I was, we were all very impressed with how that just, just took place. And the, the offer was made to anybody with a concern, as I remember. And, and the schools and those who are under your guidance did all they could to help with those parents. And I'm very confident without knowing, but I'm very confident that many, many kids were better prepared. And as you've mentioned, Davis Connect and the different virtual learning and the different kinds of things that we had to deal with this year. Very impressed with your department. I am very impressed with your department, with your leadership, and with all who, you know, you have many, many, many people that deserve the credit along with you. But it also, I think, too, of, we have with, with us tonight, we have teachers, and we also have organization, teacher organization leaders, and some who probably are watching the live stream educators. And it's been, it's been more than just challenging. And nobody knows unless they've been in the classroom or unless they've been in leadership like you have and others that have been in leadership. Nobody really knows because we sense how difficult it was. But the, the people that really went through that were, you know, they, they were, they were heroes in many, many ways. As I've said before, I'm, I'm confident that many of them went home at night and just crashed and probably shed tears, and the next morning they got up, and there they were again. And we, we so much appreciate that and, and look forward to better days and easier days. But we'll face challenging days as well. But we're getting through this particular challenge, and it's because really of you and others like yourself in different positions who have stepped up. And, you know, through your sincere heartfelt comments tonight about kids, that's, that's representative of our, of our educators. So we appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, President.
Thank you very much. No more questions? We'll go to...
Excuse me, President, Ms. Larson, just want to echo Presidents. You know, when we do our board visits, I always love the opportunity the board takes to visit classrooms with, with IEP students, some of our different units. And again, the, the amazing challenges that have been met by our special educators has, has, has been really something to watch in terms of, you know, particularly dealing with our most fragile students with all the challenges of COVID that have been, you know, and that started with like President talked about, the revisiting of almost nearly every IEP in the district. And that's a massive, massive job. And I just want, from an administrative perspective, you to know that, how much we appreciate it as well.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Board, it's necessary for us to move to a closed session for the purpose of personnel. So if we could get a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make a motion that we move to closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel issues. I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Gerard, second by Ms. Stevenson, to move to closed session for the purpose of personnel. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Mumford?
Yes.
Ms. Phipps?
Yes.
Ms. Gerard?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
I'm yes. Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Eckersley?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of you being with us. We will have that meeting in this room here, so we appreciate you being with us. Thank you very much.